Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 7:37. I call this meeting to order. I'm gonna do roll call. Mr. Basilio Villarreal.
Yeah, President.
Mr. Noe Castillo.
President.
Mr. Daniel Garcia.
President.
This is Letty Lopez.
President.
This is Dr. B.
Here.
And myself present as well. Mr. Ramirez did call in. And he's a little bit sick. He has f-throat, so he couldn't make it to you. Nani, can you help us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Section three, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion on section three?
I move to-
I will take that proposal as presented.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garcia. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item number one, consider and take possible action on donations to RGCC ISD.
Mr. President, I think we forgot the public forum.
Do we have a- Okay. I move to approve item one as presented in our board packet. We have a motion, I'm sorry, we have a motion by Mr. Garcia. Do we have a second?
What item are we talking about?
What?
I second.
Item one. We have a second by Mr. Villarreal. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item number two, consider and take possible action on renewal of contract agreement between Servant Children and Adolescents in Need, Inc., for the year 2019-2020.
I move we approve item two as presented in our board agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lopez. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item number three, consider and take possible action on proposed tax rates that will be published in the notice of the public meeting.
Mr. Felatap, this is the item that we wanted to amend.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So, do I read it as-
Yes, yes. If I may, Mr. President, Madam Superintendent, because we are talking about budgets, there was some, I guess, house cleaning matters that we had to take care under the laws. We had to make sure that we spoke about the lagging funds, the proposed tax rates, and the proposed budget that's going to be advertised here in the next week or so. So, because it does have to do with item number three, I did recommend that they place it on there because, again, it has to do with the budget, it has to do with the publishing, so that, so it's a proper amendment even though it's not on there because, again, it has to do with the tax rate, the budget, and the discussion of the lagging fund. So, you may read the amendment.
Okay. Good evening. Discussion, consideration, and possible action on district property values setting the tax rate. Proposed tax rates and district funding lag which will be published in notice for the public meeting set for August the 28th, 2019 for purposes of setting and approving of the tax rate and approving the RGCC ISD 2019-2020 budget. The proposed tax rates to be published in the notice for the public meeting are as follows: Maintenance and operation, 1.0125; interest and sinking, .3099, for a total of 1.3224. The proposed tax rate is to be published on August 13th, 2019, in the time prior, and the public meeting date will be August the 28th of 2019. As required by changes under the first rating indicators, we, or the board, are supposed to discuss property values and the funding lag. So, if you will see in the folder or you have a copy of that, in the current year, TA uses prior year property values in calculating each school district's local share of foundation school program funding. Using school districts' prior year property values does not fully reflect the property values decline that may be experienced by some school districts. When the agency calculates the SFP payments during the fiscal year, the agency is required to assume the same estimated property value increase in property values for all school districts. So, school districts with declining property values may experience significant underpayment created, what is called a funding lag. The funding lag may negatively impact cash flow and overall funding levels for some school districts. The funding lag is based on property wealth and not student need. And basically, House Bill 3 is gonna do is that they're, they want to get rid of this funding lag because now they are going to base the funding on current values. And this is what we were talking about in the session. I'm gonna go. So, if you look on the net sheet with prior year values, what happened when values declined? And what they're saying is that, with some caveats, the districts are entitled to an amount of funding based upon the students that are enrolled, which is depicted by the top line. And second, the system first assumes that the district collects local property taxes, which is the green part. And then, when looking at prior year values, the system assumes the district has more taxes than they collected. So, if you look at the darker green, that would be current year, but if you notice, they are using the prior property values, or the state aid is calculated based on the prior year. So, as you can see, that funding lag is that gap between the state aid, when the state aid is applied, to that top line. So, House Bill 3 is now gonna be getting rid of that funding lag, which is now gonna be basing funding aid on current values.
Ms. Gonzalez, now funding's gonna be, what is it, put on the current taxation, the values that we have today now?
Yes.
Because we're always one year behind before, right?
Right.
So, the new law says that they're gonna fund us according to whatever we have this year, correct?
Yes. Because they wanna base it on student need and not property wealth.
That's the way it's been for about 20, 25 years, correct?
Yes. Yes, sir. Any questions? Thank you.
You really don't, this is for the advertising, Ms. Gonzalez and I went over this, for the advertising, you don't need board approval to advertise it.
But aren't we, but aren't we setting a tax rate today? Don't you have to have, have a motion to at least set the tax rate before we advertise?
Well, that's what you all were discussing, yes. But I think that that was discussed in the workshop, so that's one of the reasons that we put it on there, so that in case you wanted to set it today and let the public know, this is the tax rate we're gonna set, and it'll be published in the newspaper.
But don't we have to kind of, before we publish it in the newspaper, don't we have to set it?
Yes, sir, you do.
So, we do have, we need a motion then, right?
You do.
To set it. Otherwise, we're gonna publish something we haven't approved, correct?
Right. That's correct.
Okay. So-
So, it is, it is an action item. And I just wanted to clarify that, that for the purpose of advertising, you don't need a motion. For setting the tax rate, you do need it.
Yeah. The only problem is, we're gonna advertise a tax rate that hasn't been approved, it gets complicated.
I agree with you, sir. It needs to be voted on today.
Do we have a motion on item three?
I will take that proposal as presented.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garcia. I just wanna say before we make, we pass the item that, well, I, we have good news and bad news. The bad news is that we're not approving the races tonight. They would be approved on the board meeting August the 28th, August the 28th. The good news is the numbers are going up. Hopefully, they can go higher. So- All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
Mr. Velazquez, I'm glad you said that, and hopefully, they go much, much higher. Thank you.
Item number four, consider and take possible action on requisition $5,000 and over in a 12-month aggregate.
I move that we approve item four as presented in our board agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I had a, because I saw notice that we're approving about $100,000 worth of HVAC expenses, either fixtures or parts. And I know we have, it might not be fair, but we have a new maintenance director. I just wanted to see if he could give a little update to see how we're at, at the beginning of the school year with our HVAC systems throughout the district.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, Ms. Garcia, Superintendent, right now, that is our goal. We're shooting for, come Monday, when our students and teachers and staff start, that we are as close to 100% ready to start the school year. As of right now, we do have one elementary campus that will need six units, Alto Bonito, which will house a three-year-old program. It will take six weeks to get the units, but the principal has a plan B for now. So, we're looking here, by the time the school year starts, we're still gonna be about four or five weeks away from being to where we have that operational, but she does have a plan B. Other than that, again, we're shooting for every other campus to be ready to go here for Monday, next Monday.
Okay.
Ms. Lopez, can I ask just a question? How many air-conditioned techs do we have in our school district?
Right now, we have two techs and two subs. So, we're, I'm sorry, we're at three. We had one that was transferred to maintenance, so we're at three techs and two subs.
Do you think that five, five air techs is enough to cover the whole district?
The situation that we're in right now, once we have everything in place, we are getting contracted services to help us. Once we have everything here for the start of the school year, we can be all right with those five. But right now, we do need the help with, Ms. Garcia did allow us to have contracted services.
So, you're saying if most of our units weren't 20 years old, five techs is sufficient?
Once everything is up and going, we can handle it with five techs. Right now, we do need the additional help, and, and again, we were allowed to get contracted services here to help us out start the school year.
So, just one quick question, Lopez. If we need all this help, that means five techs weren't doing it for us in the past, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item number five, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bids: number 20-01, 20-02, 20-03, 20-04, RFP 20-06, 20-07.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item five as presented in our board packet.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garcia.
Just one question, Mr. Smiley, are they all-o bids?
They are all, yes, sir, they are all-o bids.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item number six, consider and take possible action on TASB localized update 112 affecting policies.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, Ms. Garcia, Superintendent of Schools, before you have update 112, which is recommended by our TASB, through TASB, and you see 15 local policies, legal policies are adopted on their own, and the 15 you see outlined in the board agenda that's presented to the public, these are usually repercussions from statute. So, attached, the local policies attached on your agenda are recommended by administration for approval. If you have any questions on specific ones?
I have a question for Ms. Garcia. In page 64, it says, "Is this part of the policy to maintain positive professional work relationship in the board committee, keep the board informed of significant issues as they arise, using agreed-upon criteria, procedures, and information?" Would that be part of the board policy, or part of the things we're passing tonight?
Say that again, sir.
In page 64?
Mm-hmm.
It says BA, it says, "Keep the board informed of significant issues as they arise, using agreed-upon criteria and procedures for informational dissemination." Is that part of the, what we're passing tonight? It's page 64.
I'm new to this, but I would then need Mr. Dr. Salinas to answer that for me.
Would that be BJA local, sir?
Yeah, it's page 64. Just go to page 64, 3.1, BA.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Is this part of the policies we're gonna-
Yes, sir.
Okay. And said, and saying that, I'm just gonna say, Ms. Garcia, we've had a lot of changes here, and you're the superintendent, you can do as many changes as you want, but it would be nice to basically get some kind of email or some kind of, send us something of what's going on in the district as far as employment, as whatever is going on, because we have not been informed of very many of these things.
I did inform the board president, sir, and I did tell him that he, if he'd like to share with everybody else. But I can't send an email from now on.
Because on this thing, it's saying that, that you have to basically keep the board informed. Is that correct, sir?
That is, that is correct. Many, as you know, many a superintendent have been separated from boards because they don't keep boards informed, so that is-
I'm just saying, just give us the information, that's all I'm asking.
I won't do-
And by email, or by text, or whatever. I know you text us when things are broken, which is nice, but it would be nice to get an email, this is what transpired this week, or this last two weeks, and things of that nature.
Not a problem.
Or sometimes they're called Friday letters.
So, at the end of that week, the superintendent will send out to all board members, these
are the changes, updates on what you've done before and the projects that you have, and it just, again, that way, that's not an issue, but they're called Friday updates, or weekly updates.
One last question, now that we're on this thing. I know our board meetings are for the second Tuesday. Any reason we moved it to Monday?
We moved it to Monday?
Well, we moved it, our board meetings are usually every Tuesday, second Tuesday, right? Of the, of the month, but today, we had scheduled it for Tuesday, and we moved it to Monday.
We try to accommodate whenever everybody's available.
Okay. So, so, Mr. President, if one of us can't show up, can we call you and say, and-
Yes, sir.
Basically ask, can you move it forward or move it backward?
Yes, sir. Like I said at the workshop, what we have to do is work together, and I'm willing to do that, sir. I'm willing to do that with every single one of you, because that's what they need.
That's what we all need.
Yes, yes. And before, a few months back, I didn't know there was a board meeting until Mr. Rios would deliver the agenda.
We've been in the same position right now, and we find out from everybody else what's going on. We would appreciate if that would be a case that-
Thank you very much. That, that was the case a few months ago, but, like I said, I mean, I'm willing to work together.
All I'm saying is-
That's what we should do for that.
I guess Mr. Castillo's saying is, what you think, what the feelings you're having are the feelings we have, that's it. And all we're saying is, send us a flyer on Friday, this is what we did, or whatever it is. Because according to this thing, it says that you have to keep us informed. And I, and I know you make all the decisions, and if, in the future, one of us can't attend a board meeting, we'll certainly come to you and ask you-
Yes, sir.
-to move it up or move it down.
Yes, sir. And like I said, I'm more than happy to call you, text you, if you don't answer, whatever, whatever we have to do, whatever we have to do to work together.
Okay.
And I also think that, if I'm wrong, that we also will be re-inventing the committee meetings, which are open to the public as well, so that way, all the board members are informed, we will all be sitting on committees, and that way, information will be shared more freely, it'll be more available to everyone, so that all of these things that we discuss at the meetings will be pre-discussed, and you can ask your questions then. So, I think that's worked for us in the past, and we're looking very forward to having that re-implemented. So, we're very excited about that. I think you'll find that that helps to solve your problem of information sharing.
At this time, I move that we approve item six as presented in our board packet.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Item seven, consider and take possible action on proposed 2019-2020 after-school programs.
Mr. President, members of the board, Ms. Garcia, Superintendent of Schools, in order to provide acceleration, remediation, and intervention services to all identified student populations, there is a need for an after-school program that will be detailed in an overall instructional design which we have provided for you. For the 2019-2020 school year, the following, and I know I put six, but there's actually seven programs. The first one would be the Credit Recovery Program, that's for high schools only. The Credit by Exam Program, again, for high schools only. The Title I Part VIII After-School Tutorial Program, beginning September for high schools, beginning January, middles, and elementaries. The TSI Preparation Program, the Advanced Placement Program, the Absence Recovery Program, and I'm adding the Migrant Tutors Program. All in all, after going back and looking at the numbers, and we compared it to this past year, there is a new budget. It's no longer 567,069. Now, we're looking more along the lines of 704,962, which is what we spent this school year total. So, we left it at that. Of course, we have a little bit of a cushion in case there's an emergency towards the end. I know that this past summer, we opened up several other programs to help all the seniors make sure they graduated, so we're prepared for that. But at present time, we're asking for those seven programs to be approved. The funding will come from General 199, and that's only for the Credit by Exam, Code 31, and that's handled by the Guidance and Counseling Department. And all other six programs will be paid through, through Title I Part VIII to XI.
Sir, we're talking item 19, I mean, item seven.
Seven.
I move that we present item seven as presented in our board packet.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
Can I have a question for Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir.
Just real quickly, you keep hearing that, it comes out in the newspaper over and over again, that funding, additional funding, is that coming in or not?
We're very excited, because we're supposed to get about 6.3 in, in Title I funds alone. That came from Henrique Guerra's office, but we probably won't see that, maybe, we're hoping in November.
So, but we're gonna see 6.3 million dollars?
We're hoping to see that amount, because that is what we were told, yes, sir. And then, in state funding as well.
They're gonna give a big boost then.
Yes, sir. And, and at that point, you know, if the schools need, of course, more assistance, we'll, we'll push it through.
But 6.3, they've already notified you, Henrique Guerra.
In addition, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Item number eight, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase AgileMind Mathematical Supplemental Resource Program for Ace Middle School for the year 2019-2020.
I move that we approve item eight as presented in our board packet.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item number nine, consider and take possible action on request for permission to attend the Scholastic Comprehensive Literacy Summit in San Diego, California, on October 27th through October the 29th, 2019.
Good evening, Mr. Velazquez, Board President, members of the board, Ms. Garcia, Superintendent of Schools, and audience present. Scholastic Education is a company that has been working with us in providing supplemental materials for different grade levels. This year, they are going to be having their Comprehensive Literacy Summit in San Diego, California, October 27th through the 29th, and they are inviting three central office administrators, the Early Childhood Director, Mr. Trias, our Parental Engagement Director, Mrs. Maquis, and myself, a bilingual director, to participate in this, in this summit. There's no cost to the district, they will be paying for everything, transportation, meals, everything, hotel, so we respectfully request permission to attend and participate in this summit.
I move that we approve item number nine as presented in our board packet.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal, second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item, item number 10, consider and take possible action on 123 Andres Student Assemblies and Family Engagement Concert.
Yes, sir. On this item, we have been bringing Andres 123 for the past two years. He's a Latin Grammy winner for children music, and he does it in both languages, English and Spanish, which is great for our bilingual, dual-language program. In addition to that, he also provides a family engagement concert, which has been very successful in the past two years. And by, once again, we wanna bring him to present at every elementary, so there would be 10 assemblies, lasting 15 minutes each one, and then, he'll do a parental engagement concert. This is during the week of February the 10th through the 14th. In addition to that, we're also getting some CDs that we would give to the first 100 parents that arrive there, and the total cost is $8,500. We do have funding through Title III, and by approving this, we're also in compliance with Title III federal program for the parental, family, and community engagement component. So, we respectfully request-
What's the cost, sir?
The total cost is $8,500, sir.
You have funding for it?
Yes, we do, sir, through Title III.
I move we approve, we approve item 10 as presented in our board packet.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lopez. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item 11, consider and take possible action on pre-last, last assessment by Data Recognition Corp. for the 2019-2020 school year.
Yes, sir. On this item, starting this school year, 1920, the State of Texas, Texas Education Agency, changed the initial assessment for identification purposes. Now, it's one company for the whole state, for all the school districts, and it is data corporation known as PreLast and LastLinks. We are, because of the cost, you know, we don't know exactly how much it's gonna cost to get all the kids, but we have until October 31st, based on the newsletter that we just got yesterday, to switch from, we had IPT, now to LastLinks. And so, total cost will be about between $25,000 to $30,000. Like I said, I don't have a fixed amount, because we don't know, we have to order kids, we have to order assessments. It also has, has an online component. Pre-K and Kinder have to be on paper, first through 12th grade, we can do it online.
What does it do exactly?
What they do, what they do, sir, any new student to the, to the, any school district in the State of Texas, in this case, Pre-K, Pre-K 3, Pre-K 4, they're, they're new, and any student from first all the way to 12 that come from outside Texas, or let's say, Mexico, we have to give them a home language, and that home language, they answer two questions. If, if any of the questions is answered with English, Spanish, 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 or Spanish English, we have to assess them with this test to see how much they know of the English language. And for Pre-K through fifth grade, it has to be given in both languages. So, that's, that's what the state requires. And then, the LPAC has to review that data and determine if they belong in the bilingual or ESL program.
But you said you were using another program last year.
We were using the Iowa Proficiency Tester. Thus, for many years, we have had that program, but now, the State of Texas has changed to just one state, one company for the whole state.
I move we approve item 11 as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item number 12, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase the Ready Writing Program for Curriculum Associates for the 2019-2020 school year.
Yes, sir. On this item, for the past year, one of the areas where we have been struggling is writing, fourth grade, seventh grade, and of course, English I, English II at the high school. Last year, as a supplemental resources, we purchased materials from Ready Writing Curriculum Associates to facilitate the instruction and strengthen the instruction in those grade levels. We started with second grade last year only. Obviously, those kids are now moving to third grade, so we wanna purchase the materials now for third grade, and at the same time, target fourth grade and fifth grade. In other words, have second, third, fourth, and fifth. Total cost for this will be $16,146. Funding is 199 state bilingual pending availability of funds for the new school year. So, we respectfully request approval.
So, pending funding, if you get funding, you buy it, if you don't get funding, you don't buy it.
That is correct, sir, but there should be funding on state bilingual. It's just that right now, we're waiting for September the 1st.
Okay. Now, we're there, we approve item 12 as presented in our board packet.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas.
Item 13, consider and take possible action renewal of agreement between Frontline Education Information Management Service and RGCC ASD for the 2019-2020 school year.
Good evening, Mr. Velazquez, School Board President, Board Members, Ms. Garza, Superintendent of Schools, ladies and gentlemen. The Special Services Department is respectfully requesting the renewal of the Frontline Education Information Management Service, formerly known as E-S Fed for the 2019-2020 school year. Frontline Education is a web-based application service that stores and processes all special education student information. This product provides reliable expert service for the life of the E-Star Series contract, ensures timely, efficient implementation customized to the district's and state requirements, delivers flexible training programs to ensure all users maximize the use of the technology, offers authorized user access to technical support for quick response to any issue, and maintains federal and state reporting regulations and makes necessary changes. If approved, the duration of the contract will be from August 1st, 2019, through July 31st, 2020. The cost of this program is $29,859.82, and is being funded through IDEA-B to 24, pending availability of funding. We respectfully recommend approval.
I move we approve item 13 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
Item 13, right?
Item 14, consider and take possible action on renewal of contract agreement between Texas State Billing Services, Inc., and RGCC ASD for the 2019-2020 school year.
Once again, our department is seeking the approval for extending the State Texas Billing Services Incorporated contract for the 2019-2020 school year. Texas State Billing Services provides the most efficient and professional Charz Medicaid Billing Services with an ethical commitment to superior customer service. In addition to various billing options, they partnership with E-S Fed. TSVS also ensures compliance with local, state, and federal laws, onsite cost report, and audit assistance, as well as a range of reporting and data tracking tools. The administration fee is 6% for all Charz reimbursement checks, and the estimated cost for this school year is approximately $60,000. Funding source will be from the General Fund 199. We respectfully recommend approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 15, consider and take possible action on speech pathologist supervision services stipends for the 2019-2020 school year.
Once again, we are requesting that speech pathologists receive a stipend of $5,000 for each speech therapist being supervised under their license for the 2019-2020 school year. We have four pathologists supervising five different speech therapists for a total cost of $25,000. The funding source will be from General Fund 199. We respectfully recommend approval.
Is it something we've done in the past?
Yes, sir. This is something, it is customary. It's been done for the past so many years.
We've done it in the past, correct?
Yes, sir. We have.
Then I saw move we approve item 15 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 16, consider and take possible action on renewal of memorandum of understanding between Community Development Institute Head Start and RGCC ASD for the 2019-2020 school year.
In order to comply with all federal and state laws pertaining to the transition of special needs students, the Special Services Department is seeking the renewal of the memorandum of understanding between the Community Development Institute Head Start and Rio Grande City ASD for the 2019-2020 school year. The purpose of this agreement is to provide services to preschool children ages 3 to 5, suspected of a disability, or eligible for special education or related services who are transitioning into the public school system or local education agency, and/or receiving services to eligible children for early childhood. We respectfully recommend approval, and there's no cost to this item other than the services that are going to be provided by the staff that we already have onboard.
I'm over that we approve item 16 as presented in our board package.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. I do like the no cost.
I do, too.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 17, consider and take possible action on renewal of inter-local cooperation agreement between Regional Day School Program for the DEF and RGCC ASD 2019-2020 school year.
Once again, we're seeking the renewal of the inter-local cooperation agreement between the Regional Day School Program for the DEF and RGCC ASD for this school year. The Regional Day School Program is to provide, to the extent that federal, state, and local resources permit, an educational program for persons from birth through age 21 who have a hearing impairment, which severely impairs processing linguistic information through hearing, even with recommended amplification, and which adversely affects educational performance. The cost per student per year includes, of course, their tuition, which is at $12,500, the AI direct service for $6,000 per student, the AI consult for $2,500, and the all-infant direct for $6,000. The billing is based on the number of students served by the RSD on September of the current school year. Enrollment will be reviewed on September 1st, on December 1st, and then once again, on March 1st. The approximate cost for this year will be about $165,000, and funding will be provided by IDEA-B to 24. We respectfully recommend approval.
I move that we approve item 17 as presented. Correct me, Mr. DEF, correct?
Yes, correct, sir.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 18, consider and take possible action on renewal of contract services agreement between Small Business Computer Services and RGCC ASD 2019-2020 school year.
Once again, we are seeking the renewal of contract service agreement between Small Business Computer Services for RGCC ASD for the 2019-2020 school year. Small Business Computer Service provides the Special Education Department with specialized computer series and technical support. The customized database is written in FileMaker Pro program, which maintains the upkeep of important and crucial student information. The customized interactive web calendar for five secondary campuses provided for Gruia High School, Rio High School, RMS, Veterans Middle School, and Gruia Middle School is another one of the professional services that is offered by SBCS. The calendar allows for teachers to review scheduled arts and run daily, weekly, or monthly reports as required. The Small Business Communication maintains remote backups and provides training to special education staff as needed. The file server cost is about $6,500. The annual renewal is $995, and the data calendars run at $499 per campus, and that total will be $2,495 for an overall total cost for the service of $9,990, and funding is available from IDEA-B to 24. We respectfully recommend approval.
I move that we approve item 18 as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 19, consider and take possible action on courses offered by the Career and Technical Education Department through RGCU Voltech LLC for Gruia High School.
Gruia High School, sorry.
And Early College High School. Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Board President, Madam Superintendent, Board Members, ladies and gentlemen. Once again, we're asking your approval to get subcontracted services for Gruia High School and Early College High School. The students will be acquiring the following certifications, which is now required for them to graduate from high school if they don't go through another career path, which would be like dual enrollment or the academics. So, this is one of them, or military. We're asking for the Nurse Assistant Program, which is the CNA, the Flabotomy, the Certified Medical Administrative Assistant, the Certified Medical Billing and Coding for both schools, Gruia High School and Early College High School. Rio Grande City has two in-house instructors, but at these high schools, we do not have them. So, that is why we're asking to renew it. And the cost is right here. They're different, as you can see. CNA and Flabotomy, it is approximately $2,070 per student. No cost to the student or their parents, but to the department it is. For the Certified Medical Administrative Assistant and Certified Medical Billing and Coding, it is $1,700 per student. And I'm very pleased to say that three high school students from Gruia High School are working at the Resama Manor as juniors. And the real good thing about this certification is that they can get it when they're 16 years old. We don't have to wait till they're 18. So, I would like to recommend, respectfully recommend that you approve.
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
I just want to say briefly, I just got a text that the audio on the livestream is not being, I heard it at their, at homes. Just, I don't know, they can check on that and, or something that's accurate, but that's, I just got a text.
Well, the microphones are working very well today.
Yes.
That's all I know. They may not hear us over there, but we're hearing here, right?
Lady science. Item number 20, consider and take possible action on courses offered by the Career and Technical Education Department through McAllen Careers Institute for RGC High School, Gruia High School.
Yes, Madam Superintendent and Board Members, I am respectfully asking your approval, also as subcontracted services, for Gruia High School, Rio Grande City High School, and Early College High School. This is the courses that we will be offering, Welding 1, 2, and 3. At the end of those career pathways, the student will acquire their AWS, the American Welding Society Certification, which is one of those listed in our certifications for state approval for the public school. The cost is approximately $3,000 per student. There is no cost to the parent, but there is to the program. I would respectfully recommend that you approve.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Castillo. Second by Mr. Villarreal. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
I think there's a lot of welding jobs over there in the pipelines right now, so it's a very good profession.
Item number 21, consider and take possible action on dual enrollment courses offered by the Career and Technical Education Department through South Texas College for Rio Grande City High School.
Through Career Technical Education, not only do we have subcontracted services, but we also have dual enrollment. So, these are dual enrollment where we actually have the professor come into Rio Grande City High School, and any student, also Gruia, but we have, biggest population, of course, is Rio Grande City High School, any student can take these classes free, no cost to the student, but a cost to, to us, to the department, to the school district. Anyone can take them after they have taken BIM 1 and BIM 2, and these are dual enrollment classes. It's digital interactive multimedia, business information management, and web technologies.
I move.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. All in favor, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item 22, consider and take possible action on dual enrollment courses offered by the Career and Technical Education Department through South Texas College for Rio Grande City High School for the 2019-2020 school year.
In continuation with dual enrollment classes through with STC, this is through the career pathway of precision manufacturing. The students are also bused on a daily basis from Rio Grande City High School to STC. We do have a teacher, Mr. Robert Aberine. You probably have seen him in the newspaper. The students get to graduate from STC, not with a degree, but with their accomplished hours, and then on their own, they would pay the remainder of the, of the college classes to get their degree in that. But this has been a very successful program. It is difficult to complete. There is no cost to the student or the parents, but there is a cost to the program, which STC bills.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Castillo. Second by Mr. Villarreal. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item 23, consider and take possible action on dual enrollment courses offered by the Career and Technical Education Department through South Texas College for Rio Grande City High School and Gruia High School.
This is an innovative dual enrollment class that we started two years ago on the request of Mr. Ricky Science at that time, and Julio Aguiar. And this is a very interesting class. It's a 45-hour degree from STC. HVAC is Heating Ventilation Air Conditioning. At the end of the two years, the students will have 16 college hours to get their HVAC. And we were speaking to the maintenance director that they would really like to do their practicum to help the air conditioning guys for the school district. Your approval as well. So, there is no cost to the parents or the students, but there is a cost to the program and the school district for this dual enrollment class.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Castillo. Second by Mr. Villarreal. Is this the first year or have we offered this?
This is gonna be our third year.
First year?
Third.
Third?
Third.
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe we could use them in school to fix air conditioning.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, the professor would accompany them, maybe like in the morning, and they could help out with the maintenance. I would give them hand signs.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Second by Mr. Castillo.
The other way around.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Castillo. Second by Mr. Villarreal. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item 24, consider and take possible action on Region 1 Education Service Center District Commitment Form for the Library Services and Instrumental Resources Cooperative for the 2019-2020 school year.
Once again, we're asking continuing to the consortium to Region 1. Region 1 provides all the, all the library services databases for all the schools in the Region 1, but there is a cost. It went up like 10 cents. It's $3.20 per student, and last year it was $3.10 per student. It doesn't look like it's a lot, but at the end, it was a lot. It was like, you know, close to $32,000. I don't have a budget for library science, but Ms. Federal, the Federal Programs Director, Ms. Gina Gonzalez, every, for the past year, she has funded this through the 199 SE. So, this is to continue the library services at all the libraries for the district.
We have a motion by Dr. B.
Second.
Second by Mr. Villarreal. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Villarreal. Item 25, consider and take possible action on amendment of policy EIC Academic Achievement.
Board President, members of the Board, Superintendent Garza, I come to you with the amendments to the graduation ranking policy. We are currently in a transition. We're trying to separate dual and AP. And in an effort to do that, we had to normalize the points or make it equal amount of points because a lot of times, the counselors ask the students, why do you take this course or that course over this course? And a lot of times, it goes back to the points. So, to better streamline our two programs, and with the addition of Early College, we figured that the best way to do this was if a student is taking dual, they get 12 points added to their ranking, and if they take an AP course, they would get 12 points as well. The way we have it right now is we give nine for a dual class. If the class is taught by a high school teacher and it's AP dual, we give it 12. But we figured that the best way to do it was if we gave equal points, that way those students who are trying to seek that associate's degree, or trying to get those 60 hours, would say, you know what, I'm gonna get the points anyway. And then those students who are doing the AP route would say, you know what, I'm looking at trying to pass those AP exams and prepare myself for a Tier 1 university at some point. So, this way, we're making it like an even playing field. The other thing that we're adding here is the OnRamps program, which is a program through the University of Texas that does online credit for college. And the beauty of that is that if the child decides to bank the credit, they can bank it, but if the child maybe gets a D or a C and doesn't want that reflected on their transcript, at the end of the semester, they can say, you know what, I'm gonna remain in the course, but I do not want to bank the credit. So, we figured since those students... So we figured since those students are doing university-level work, they should also be recognized and get points. If you look at page five of nine, the changes are denoted in red. I don't know if your copies are in color. Yes, okay. All the changes that we're making, we left everything else intact, of course. It will start with the beginning of this ninth grade class, which is two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and it explains there the points. We clarified some things on commencement exercises. Then we also clarified the highest ranking graduate. There was a school in the valley that had an issue with who to declare for the highest ranking student, and you may say, why is that important? Because the state recognizes anyone who is our top-ranking student, gets one-year tuition, waiver, fee for both semesters. But if you don't have that clearly outlined, how you're gonna determine who is the highest ranking, then that could be an issue. There was an issue in PSJA where there had to be litigation as to who was the highest ranking, so we said we need to clarify that. So it says, "The student meeting the local eligibility criteria for recognition as valedictorian shall also be considered the highest-ranking graduate for purposes of receiving the honor graduate certificate from the state of Texas." So we just put that statement there to clarify it. On the following page, all we added was, like I mentioned earlier, the AP, the dual, and the OnRamps. Then in item number four of page six, we just had, we added Rattler, Gator, and Cougar Scholar, and that is any student who graduates into the Foundation's program that is ranked in the top ten percent. Page seven of nine, again, is just clarifying. In the second paragraph, we added that any student on an AP exam who gets a three or a four will be awarded a quarter of a point, and a student who gets a five, which is the highest you can get in the AP exam, would be awarded half a point for a maximum of two points. Then on page eight of nine, again, we just clarified what courses will be averaged, and then there you see the big changes in points. On the last bullet of page eight, we added college prep. Because we are bringing college prep courses back, we will be awarding three points to the ninth graders of this year. We didn't have them before, so we're including that as well. And then the rest is just terminology to clarify the policy. Are there any questions about the changes to the ranking policy? We will submit to Dr. Salinas, then he submits the policy to Tasby. If there are any corrections as far as legal, usually I know that I took this to policy about four years ago. I've been doing ranking for about twenty years, so I think when we took it last time, they kicked it back, so I'll submit to him. If there's any terminology that needs to be corrected, I will certainly address that and bring it back to you all.
I move we approve item twenty-five as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I have one question. When does this program take an effect? Like, for example, we're changing the AP versus dual enrollment. Is it for incoming freshmen, or is it for junior, senior?
It is, we're, right now, if we have a dual AP, and it's one of our teachers, that is no additional cost to the district, so that is staying. However, if we have a dual AP where we have a visiting professor, then we're either calling it dual or we're calling it AP.
The only thing I'm trying to get is simply put, so we have a class ranking for juniors right now, so is it gonna affect their rankings or not?
No, this is for the incoming ninth graders.
Okay.
Well, if you look at the first part of the policy, we have to leave the other ranking policy intact, so don't continue.
You're gonna leave everything the same, and this is for everybody who starts at freshman.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item twenty-six, consider and take possible action on Fall nineteen dual enrollment courses through South Texas College for Rio Grande City High School, Early College High School, and Gruya High School.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Board Members, and Ms. Garza. I bring to you the academic portion of the dual enrollment. Ms. Villarreal just presented to you the Career and Technology Dual Enrollment. I have provided a spreadsheet of all the requests that are coming for the Fall of twenty nineteen for dual enrollment, and if you notice here, anything that is in black are teachers that we have at the district that also teach for STC dual, and any section in red is what we do have to contract out from STC.
One quick question, ma'am. I've heard that we have teachers that have masters, let's say, in history and chemistry or whatever, and they go to STC to try and get them to do, so basically, they try and get their certification to do dual enrollment, and sometimes they have trouble. In other words, if we have a teacher that's in our district, and basically, she goes to STC and gets approved, we pay nothing because she's teaching dual enrollment, but I've been told that sometimes those teachers have trouble getting certif, not certified, but getting approved by STC. Is that true?
Getting approved by STC. That is correct, sir. We do have, we've had some teachers that have gone several.
Why is that, ma'am?
That is an STC policy that is their program that doesn't approve them. It has nothing to do with the district. That is the policy that STC. We've worked with them.
Shouldn't somebody go meet with STC and say, we've got these teachers with master's degrees, approve them for dual enrollment, so we as a district basically don't have to pay anything because our own teachers are teaching college credit, correct?
Correct, correct. And we have, we've reached out to STC. We've had meetings, but their response is that they do follow their policy, and we've had several teachers do, that do apply and try and see if they qualify, and they've had several attempts, and they've been denied. But we do make every attempt to try and get them to be approved by STC.
Just real quickly, isn't it, wouldn't it be a good idea for you to meet with the people in STC?
I have a scheduled meeting.
Okay, to see what come, the people that have master's degrees in chemistry or history. I'm just saying, if they're our teachers, that means we don't have to pay STC. It's for free, correct?
Correct. I do have a meeting with Dr. Reed and...
Dr. Delion.
I just don't understand, if an employee of ours has a master's degree, let's say in biology, why wouldn't STC want to approve them? And I just don't wanna get caught up in, well, if we, in other words, if we haven't working for a district, it costs our district zero dollars. If we bring in a professor from STC, it's gonna cost us dollars, correct?
That is correct.
With that said, I move that we approve, I believe, item twenty-six, right, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
As presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal, second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Item twenty-seven, consider and take possible action on request for permission to offer additional sports to middle schools.
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Board, and Ms. Garza, Superintendent. Athlete Department respectfully request the addition of a middle school based on softball and all three middle schools. It's approved that we will be joining Roma and Zapata, who already offer those sports at the middle school, so we're here to request permission.
Some move.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lopez.
Mr. Ramirez, if I may, Mr. President, it's because, other than the ways, I think I'll probably get the most questions about this item, then, you know, after the meeting. It's because in the packet that you prepared, which, you know, you did a great job, you know, it's very detailed, but it says three head coaches. Is that a typo? I think, should it be eight head coaches?
That would be one head coach per school.
One head coach?
And one head coach per school, that's three middle schools.
But it says it's boys and girls versus?
Yes. That's for every, every sport. For one for, the first part of the proposal talks about the baseball. On second page, it pretty much implicates the proposal for the softball, except that in softball, we don't have the pitch count, so that's minus the five forty. So pretty much, the expenses are the same for both boys and girls.
So be eight head coaches, like two, a boy and a girl for every school?
Every channel would have eight coaches. Two head coaches, one for baseball, one for softball, and then the other assistants, six assistants.
The other question I had, as it was thirty athletes, so is a per team or fifteen and fifteen?
For the middle school, which will be fifteen for seventh grade and fifteen for eighth grade.
And I know, it's because we had an issue with the cheerleading, so are we gonna cut some players, or do we have too many, or are we gonna allow everybody?
We hope not. At the middle school, we encourage all participation, so we hope not to cut kids, but we're hoping to have at least eighteen kids per team.
And the coaches that, are they gonna be allowed to apply, or are they gonna be selected by who, like the varsity head coaches?
They'll be recommended by campus coordinator and the principal.
Okay. If there's a coach, I guess, from elementary that wants to do this, can, would that be allowed, or?
It's provided by the principal.
They have to be from that campus?
Yes. It would come to recommendation through the principal, through the athletic department, through HR to recommend for approval.
So it's pretty much open to all the district?
It's approved by the district, yes, sir.
Okay.
Don't get me wrong, Mr. Ramirez, but first and foremost, if they apply from another school, the principal has to release them to go do that or not?
The principal has to give permission. A lot of times, principals, of course, have hesitation because they're involved in other tutorials or whatnot, so preferably, we wanna have them at the campus level. Now, we request help from other campuses.
What's the total cost, Mr. Ramirez?
Total cost for this program would be a hundred and thirty-four thousand for both, one hundred and thirty-four thousand for both softball and baseball.
What are we gonna provide to the baseball players? Baseball's my favorite sport, but what are we gonna provide? We're gonna provide uniforms, gloves, obviously, baseballs and bats, that's obvious, but what else are we gonna provide, do you know, as far as equipment?
Well, equipment, of course, your glove, well, your glove for catcher and the equipment for the catcher. Other players rather provide their own gloves. We'll provide a uniform, shirt, pants, of course, a cap, and of course, all travel, all meals, stipends.
Who are they gonna be playing against? Do you have an idea?
Right now, we would join the middle school, which at the middle school is only Roma, Zapata, and Rio Grande. It's total of six schools.
So let me ask you, have we basically notified our, I guess, liability carrier that we're gonna have this board, because somebody gets hit with a fastball, you know, it could cause broken noses and stuff like that? Have we made that, have we talked to our insurance about that?
I'll notify Mr. McGuire to go ahead and make that notification, but that insurance should cover all sports. I did notify you, I yelled that we will be offering middle school sports, those two sports this year, so they're also aware.
Only thing I would say, sir, is just make sure that the coaches, that coach knows something about baseball and softball.
Yes, sir.
On the cost, Mr. Ramirez, since this is the first year, the next year, it should be a lot lower, isn't it? Since we already, we're already gonna have the catchers equipment.
The first year's always the more expensive ones. We don't have any equipment at the middle school. We will be passing down some equipment from the high school, but we need to provide some good new equipment for the middle school kids.
What fields are they gonna play in, Mr. Ramirez?
They'll be using the Rattler baseball field, the Rattler softball field, and Gruya's field at the high school.
Okay, so they'll be playing in the big fields then, right?
Yes. Yes, we're proposing to play the season in November, December, before the varsity season starts in January.
Do we have a motion on item twenty-seven?
Yeah, then, Dr. B.
Sorry, Dr. B, we have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Sorry. Item twenty-eight, consider and take possible action on request for permission to use arbitr, arbiter, arbiter pay to electronically pay sports officials.
Yes, sir. Arbiter pays a fully integrated electronic payment and reporting tool that significantly reduces the time and effort required to pay sports officials. It eliminates vouchers, check processing, postage, lost or stolen checks. We heard the presentation, Ms. Robles, and I heard her presentation, and we're very impressed. It eliminates a lot of time, a lot of headaches, a lot of paperwork. It's just, the only thing is that we need to deposit some monies with a bank that they use, which is in Utah, and that was a concern. Well, not necessarily a concern, but just, we just need to be transparent to let you know that there's no, the main office is not here in Texas, it's in Utah. Schools like Sheridan, Harlingen, Los Fresnos, La Jolla already use this product, and they're very, very impressed. Officials get paid within seventy-two hours. There's no loss of time there. We will get notified what officials get assigned to our games. We will print out that sheet, we'll have the officials sign to make sure that the officials are present at their particular game, and once they get approved, we'll, you know, collect the press bond to approve payment, and that's it.
So basically, we're gonna cover all officials, basketball, baseball?
All sports, all official, yes.
Football. In other words, this is just gonna basically eliminate all the paperwork, correct?
All the paperwork, correct.
I move that we approve item twenty-eight as presented. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal, second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Anything on reports? It is now eight forty-one, under authority of Texas Government Code Section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, we're now headed to closed session. It is now nine forty-one, we're back from closed session. Item, item A does not, there's no action needed. Do we have a motion on item B?
I move that we approve item B in our closed session as presented in a board packing and as recommended behind, in a closed session.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?